First.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dick's away for a little while, having some rest and hopefully relaxation, so I just laid over here and hopefully move the meeting along. We need to have a roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A general discussion, citizens' comments. The agendas are over there. Where Rich is, go ahead and grab one. If there's anything that somebody wants to talk about that's not on the agenda, they can come forth now. Especially good things about the city. Okay, we'll move on to the thumbs up award. Sean Rexinkle?
Nothing.
Clark?
Chamber event, Saturday night. Special thumbs up to the two choir groups that performed. I'll tell you what, especially those Galen kids, third and fourth graders, to stand up in front of an auditorium of strangers and do as well as they did, it's pretty amazing. So, good job to both the choirs.
Thanks, Clark.
Nothing to add.
Nothing?
I'll pass that.
Okay, I've got a couple, and I'll follow up. Clark's on the chamber. Iris Hemmison, she's a friend of mine as well, is a very nice person. Well-deserving. She's done more volunteering than most of us could ever hope to imagine, and she's a passion for it, and that's a good choice for Citizen of the Year. The second thing is, I'll pick on our new Sentinel writer Bennett a little bit. Bennett actually was over at my office for over an hour the other day trying to figure out rollbacks in property taxes and how the adjustments were going to be phased in, phased out for commercial and multi-residential and everything. He's got an article coming out today in the paper that's trying to explain it, and I think it's pretty important that people like in the news and stuff like that that really sometimes don't understand all the intricacies actually take time and try to figure it out, and he's doing one heck of a job trying to figure it out. I mean, I've probably sat here through, it's either eight or nine Sentinel editors, and he's doing a good job. So, I think if you see Bennett or you see something he's written, he probably has it right, and he probably has good information because he checks out everything he can. So, I want to give him a thumbs up. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All these items will go together as long as everybody's happy with that. Approval of the meeting minutes, list of bills, and renewal of liquor license for Walmart.
Motion to approve consent items 1 through 3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action items. D1, comprehensive annual report. Graham, you're up, buddy.
I guess start off, just want to thank Bill and Bev and Ann and Angela and the entire staff for helping us out again this year, getting all the information gathered and put in front of us so we could get this done again this year, and we appreciate all the help and assistance they provide to us. So, I'll just kind of run through and hit a few high points in the audit report. Feel free to stop me if any questions or shoot them at me at the end, it'd be fine as well. But like I say, I'll just hit a few of the high points and keep things moving along, but feel free to ask any questions here. So, the first item I think I'll point out is on page four, and that's the second page of our independent auditor's report, or the opinion, if you will, that we're putting on the financial statements, which is the meat and potatoes of what we're hired to do is put an opinion on these financial statements. And so, as you can see in the first whole paragraph there on page four, the opinion paragraph, we say in our opinion that the financial statements contained in this report are fairly presented in all material respects. So, that's a good, clean, unmodified opinion and exactly what you're looking for. So, no issues report there. Starting on page six is what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. That runs to page 15, and that's some good comparative information put together by Bill and other finance department staff, with, like I say, comparatives from FY13 to fiscal year 12 showing any changes or differences between the two years, and then some good commentary on why those changes occurred or any other noteworthy information financially concerning the city. So, I kind of always refer to that as the Cliff Notes of the financial statements. If you're looking for just a quick nine-page summarization of where the city's at, what's going on, without reading the remaining eighty-some-odd pages, that's where I would start. So, good information there, put together by city staff. So, then just quickly from there, I think the next spot, I'll draw your attention, pages 21 and 22. Those are what we refer to as the fund-level governmental statement of activities or revenues and expenditures in this case. And there we start to break out information of the city by fund, which many of the revenue streams the city has have some outside restrictions on, whether it be from the state or the federal government or various other funding agencies, and those are required to be accounted for in a separate fund. And then basically, the catch-all or everything else in the general operating fund of the city is the general fund. And that's where a lot of your normal day-to-day operations are accounted for, whether it be here at City Hall or the street department or parks and rec and so forth. Most of that general day-to-day activity is running through that general fund. And I know one of the measuring sticks we talk about most years is the number of days of expenditures that are contained in the ending fund balance amount. And as you can see at the bottom of page 21 there, the city in the general fund had the ending fund balance of about $2.4 million. And if you look farther up the page there, the general fund showed total expenditures of about $6.83 million. And so, if you equate that into an expenditure per day, it comes out to about $18,000-some-odd dollars a day that it requires to keep the doors open, if you will. And then if you back that into the unassigned fund balance, which the total fund balance is about $2.4 million, if you look on page 19, the actual unassigned fund balance is about $2.1 million. And what that means, that unassigned amount is like it sounds. That's free of any outside or third-party restriction. The city can, I won't say spend any way they see fit, but any legal way they see fit, there's no third-party or outside restriction on that money. So, they have about 113 days expenditures in their unassigned fund balance, which, you know, we like to see anywhere in that 80 to 130, 140-day range. You know, basically what we're looking for is enough cushion to get through between the two big property tax paydays in the spring and fall, and so just to not provide enough equity, if you will, or cash flow to get enough liquidity to get through between those two periods. So, I think the general fund fund balance is in a good, healthy range there. For comparison, it was about 119 days in FY12, at the end of FY12. And as you can see on page 21, the fund balance actually increased by about $76,000, but the decrease number of days is just a function of having higher total expenditures. But again, I think all's good and healthy there. If you kind of scan across the rest of the columns there, the TIF fund saw an increase in fund balance. Majority of that is just due to timing of the funding of projects, transfers of funds to finance those other projects, and then the inflow of the TIF property taxes. And the other significant number you see there on page 22 is a $5 million decrease in the fund balance of the debt service fund. Again, nothing to be alarmed about. That basically is a function of two items, a current refunding of some debt in FY13, and then also, if you recall back, in FY12, the city issued some crossover refunding bonds, and kind of the easy answer on those is we issued some debt in FY12, but the debt that the city was going to refund was not callable until FY13. So, the city in essence had an investment sitting on the books at FY12 that was sitting there to refund the bonds that became callable in FY13. So, the beginning fund balance of debt service was a bit inflated by that proceeds sitting in escrow waiting to be spent in FY13, which they were here this last June to refund those other bonds. And as you can see, and which is the next item, I'll probably bring to your attention, is in the notes to the financials, it started on page 33. There's a lot of good detail about many facets of the city, whether it be their accounting policies, the debt they have outstanding, the composition of their fixed assets, all the way down to their retirement plans, health insurance benefits and so forth. So, if you're looking to drill into any certain areas, policies, or amounts on any of these financial statements, those notes that start on page 33 are a good starting point for that. I think the last couple items that I'll quickly draw your attention to, but then again, feel free to answer any questions. On pages 59 and 60 is the budget comparison schedule, and that's where we take the legally adopted budget amounts the city certifies in May, and then again, amends if applicable later in the year, but are the legal level of control for expenditures for the city. And then we compare those to the actual expenditures on the cash basis the city has throughout the year, and compare those to see how we shook out. And the way we're required to aggregate those and the level the city's required to budget at is what's called the functional level. And so, you'll see kind of in the middle of the page, we have the disbursements categorized into about, it looks like, eight or so categories there of functional level, and then the corresponding actual expenditures on page 60, and then what the final budgeted amount was after any applicable amendments. And you'll see that all the amounts are positive, which means we're under budget in each one of those categories, which I think is commendable, and as well that, you know, with the exception of the business-type activities, are all very close to the budgeted amounts, which I think shows that, you know, they're paying attention to the budget and trying to keep it as accurate as possible. And with the business-type activities, the couple of reasons for that large variance are just timing of projects and some other things where it might get budgeted in one year, but the project because of weather, various other items maybe didn't get done until the next fiscal year, et cetera. So, positive there. And then I think the only other item I'll quickly direct your attention to is on page And that is what's called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. At any time the city or any governmental entity expends over $500,000 of federal funds in any one year, they're required to undergo a single audit, which means just a little bit of additional testing that goes along with the other procedures we do to ensure that those dollars were spent in compliance with the federal compliance and regulations that go along with those. And so, you'll see there that the city in total expended about $550,000 of federal funds in FY13. And so, as a result of that, we were required to test the highway DOT funding, of which the city received in FY13 as a major program, which we found no compliance or other issues to report related to that. So, again, positive there as well. I think other than that, that's all that I'll bore you with here rattling on about, but would be more than happy to field any questions you might have.
Questions from the council?
I would like to make sure that we extend our thanks to Williams and Company, yourself, Graham, and everybody else who worked on this. I think we try to do a good job of giving you challenges every year, and we do things that are very somewhat difficult to audit sometimes because we're trying to do things to move the city ahead, and you seem to tackle those very well and try to present them the proper way. So, I appreciate everybody's help on that.
What did you say was the comfortable range for reserve days? I'm just, for my own information.
Sure. You know, we like to recommend anywhere 80 to about 130 days.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if you go 135 days, it's not the end of the world, or if you're at 75, again, you know, the doors aren't going to get locked shut. But you know, that's, you know, where we like to see is for a comfort zone in that range in there. So, anything else?
Got a motion to accept?
Motion accepting the City of Lamar's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2013.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think the council typically wants to keep these versus pass them because it's a lot of good stuff in here. So, we got enough, right, Bill, for us all to keep them?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next time we're moving to is the city real estate sales agreement. The real estate sales agreement with Land-Sitzman Real Estate expires on March 31, and we've got three choices. We can continue, we can negotiate with a different group or somebody else. So, let's let Shane talk about it.
Hi, everybody. Sitzman Real Estate team, I guess, would like to thank the council and certainly thank the city and its staff and the LBIC and its staff for all their hard work and effort in 2013. We've enjoyed working with everybody there and have built relationships that I think are important to help promote the city and promote growth and everything here in Lamar's. Without your help, I don't think we'd be able to get some of the successes that we've achieved here in 2013, and of course, we would like to continue into 2014 on all those fronts as well. But just to tap into a few of those successes that we've achieved together, when it comes to the sale of real estate, we achieved selling the Mock Library, a lot of details involved with that, but that is now sold and closed. There's been a lot of inquiry here lately in terms of commercial. 2013 was a little bit slower, but some of the successes that were achieved there, I know Bodine's did an expansion out in Kalis Park. We also helped Patrick Fiendstra of Fiendstra Construction, who was a long process, but finally he landed in the Industrial Park second edition. He went through looking at eyeballing some city properties and then some LBIC properties, and he's landed and construction has started there. We also have a pending sale at the moment, too, on that DOT property, and I had been visiting with Scott a little bit in regards to the status of the Public Works Building, and we may need to approach that party and maybe renegotiate a little bit later date for possession on something like that. And then also, on the C38 land, Al Pratt and his Agline business, he purchased five acres. But we continue to push a strong online presence. Definitely over 90% of the buyers out there from our studies have shown that they first reviewed that property online, and so we've been promoting properties on a couple different commercial websites, CoStar LoopNet. We've got a good online presence on the city's website. We've revamped our entire website to help promote a lot of these city properties, and, you know, the stage is always being set. I've been visiting with Scott a little bit lately about the C38 land and the addition of a wellhead going in there, and all the details involved with that, and a road that needs to be put in for access for future business there. But the stage is always being set, like in the industrial parks with the 27th Street going in, rail spur being available. And so, we're excited. I think Lamar's has a great opportunity. Just to kind of tell you a little bit about the gentleman, that Fiendstra, who finally settled in the Industrial Park here, we were competing against a couple of other cities there, and after full analysis of all the options available, he felt like Lamar's was the place to be, and is tickled pink with the spot that he's finally picked out there. So, I think there's going to be more opportunity like that. We're in a strong economy here, and for the most part, you know, with Wells back in October letting a number of people go, I think, to be honest with you, our market has pretty much absorbed most of that. So, we're looking forward to a strong 2014. We've got a low-interest rate environment and a strong local economy. So, I'd be happy to field any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I commend you for the work you've done. I think you've done a good job of marketing our property. But I guess I do need to ask, Scott, has anyone else inquired, any other Realtor?
No.
Okay.
No one has inquired. I'd like to echo just what John said. I think the relationship between city staff and Land-Sitzman Real Estate has been excellent, and they have been really good to work with. Unlike a year ago where we had a whole page of listed property because of some, I'm going to call it regulatory problems with FAA and other things, you know, some of that property has now come off of the list, at least temporarily. And so, really, what we have to market at this point in time is two main parcels, the Lamar's Industrial Park South, which is bordered by Lake Avenue and C38, and then also we have the Crescent Ridge property, which is out there by Wells Corporate just west along 200. So, we really have those two sites, and Shane is right. Just recently, Gail, Sitzman, and myself sat down with McClure Engineering to go over what they're designing on your new well, well number 13, if that's what we call it. It hasn't been labeled yet, but... And that site would be adjacent to Lake Avenue in the south addition of the Industrial Park. Most of you have seen the actual location. I don't know, Clark, if you've seen it or not. But by doing that, we do need wellhead protection, so I'm going to be visiting more with Shane relative to exactly what should we do and how should we do it so that it maximizes the use of the south Industrial Park, and yet it still affords the protection that's required under DNR and EPA. So, more on that to come, I guess, as time goes on, but that is a little bit of a glitch for that subdivision.
Before anybody makes a motion, I mean, I hate to put somebody in the spot. You got anything to add, Dave? Okay. I just wanted to make sure before we do anything, is there nobody else, right, that's a Realtor here?
I have been approached by two other brokers who have asked, you know, what is the process? And I am 100% in favor of keeping you guys on. I think, but I do think that periodically, I would like to suggest a couple of things. First of all, I want to make it very clear, myself as a brokerage have absolutely zero interest in listing this property, any of these properties. I wasn't interested in the first place, I'm not qualified to do it. But, so I'm very in favor of keeping you on, Shane, but I'd almost like the city to look at three-year contracts and possibly other brokerages next year if they have a proposal that they can market better or want a chance at marketing. We need to look at those. I know on good authority that half the brokerages are not interested, and the other half have asked about the process, so it kind of feeds into your question. I think to be fair, down the road, we have to open it up. Doesn't mean that if we open it up, you don't get it back.
Sure.
It just, it kind of keeps... Quite frankly, before you guys came on board, I felt the city was with one guy all the time, and I didn't care. I like the idea of keeping you guys sharp and giving other people an opportunity to step in and take those reins for... But I also know that to do that, it costs money for that brokerage to do that and get on different websites and signage and all that, so you have to almost go more than that simple one-year contract, because it does take some capital to get out there, and you guys are doing it. I just, I want to be fair to everybody, so...
Ken and I had discussed that when we made the change that was discussed in the committee, and I think at that time we had talked about the options of either a three or a five-year contract, so, I mean, that's not something that would be out of the realm. Are we in second year right now?
Second, yeah.
Okay.
You're asking for a third year, though. This is the renewal of the third, isn't it?
No, he's only been one year.
One year is only the second year.
Last year at this time, we took, I believe, almost two months trying to figure out what we're going to do and what we're going to not do, and then we just have a one-year deal, because most of our deals are one-year just by state that we don't want to commit long-term.
Sure.
But I tend to agree with what Clark's saying. It's almost unfair, because about the time you get out there and get going and put up the signage and stuff, then all of a sudden, you got to come back and hope and keep your fingers crossed that everything's the same the next year, so...
Yeah, and a lot of these transactions, you know, they develop over, it's a six-month period, it's over before you know it on a lot of these.
I do think five years is too long, though, in the same token.
Right. No, I mean, that's, we had just discussed some different options.
I like the three-year, but I think if it's fair and we're doing that, then this really is the second and the three-year type of thing.
So, would there be anything stopping us with what you know of the agreement from just extending it for two years? That would bring us up to the three years, and then, I mean...
If they're okay with it.
Because if I remember correctly, the agreement includes anything that whoever the current Realtor has started working with at that time, they get to finish it even if it changes hands in two years or something.
Right.
Right? Because we had that.
And the fact is, we've done like Scott says, we've taken some of the properties away that he was actually trying to market, too, so we're not exactly the easiest person to deal with. Is that a fair way to say it?
We'll be putting a contract together.
Okay, so you could include two years, which would bring it up to the total of three.
I can do whatever you guys...
I'd be good with that.
As long as you keep it legal.
Shane, any issues with that?
I'd be good with that. That would be great.
Just for the public listening, you also need to realize that in the previous agreements with Athens, as well as with the agreement with Sitzman's here, each of those had the requirement of listing on the MLS. So, that is another way where all the agents that are licensed can also get involved.
Right.
Absolutely.
And because it is on the city website as well as their personal website, then there is a little bit of autonomy there, too, if they don't want to send somebody to a different Realtor's website, which, you know...
So, does anybody have a problem with going to a two-year...
Which would fill out the three years.
...agreement to finish out the three-year, but then know that in the third year, we're going to solicit for all bids. Is that a fair way?
I'd be comfortable.
Anybody in the audience have questions?
I guess my concern, the only concern I would have is if you do more than a one, would there be other Realtors?
Well, but then if you're going to do a three-year from then on, it would just, this would carry it out through the full three years, if that's the intention.
Sure.
Like I said, that was actually discussed when we did solicit for, request for proposals last time.
Yeah, and I'd like to add that I think we need to open it up six months before that three-year period so that the city doesn't realize the three-month downtime when we decide to switch or not switch, and I'm totally fine with not switching at this point, Shane, so it's not about switching, it's about fairness.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, so somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
Motion approving listing agreement for additional two-year period with Land-Sitzman Real Estate for city properties and requiring inclusion on MLS.
Second to the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
And come back often.
Yeah.
Next item is the Highway 3 West Trail STP enhancement project bids. The bids were received for the IDOT Highway 3 West Trail Bridge, and we've got a copy of the bids, and why don't you go through it, Scott, and explain what we got?
More importantly is to explain what we don't have. The DOT Office of Contracts is where this got bid because of the federal dollars involved, and both myself have called Office of Contracts since, whatever it was, the 22nd of January, and I also had Brian Wells' call and email, and we got an email back just today at nearly nine o'clock this morning indicating that routine practice, and I quote, "The routine practice is to distribute the hard copy of these documents," which he's talking about the itemized bid tabs, "of these documents via regular mail following the letting review." That's the most important part. They don't release it until they review it themselves to make sure that they're consistent with the legalities of the bidding documents. Anyway, it goes on and says... Anyway, it goes on and says that they would be distributed and were mailed to us yesterday. So I put it on the agenda, thinking that there's a chance, because that's what we were verbally being told, and as of this morning, it was mailed yesterday. I do not have them, and they were mailed by regular mail. And as a result of that, I'm glad I put the motion suggested would be to table it for consideration at a later date. We really need that information before us, because it is an itemized bid that we did. So each and every work item, just like we've done in the past, are listed separately to see, make a comparison between what the estimate was and what the bid came in at per line item, and we don't have that information before us at this point. What you do have before us is attached, and it shows that we did get five bids, and they ranged from 246,000 to 344,000. Even the low bid is 20% higher than the engineer's estimate, which was right around 205,000. So we definitely have bids that are higher than what was expected, and I guess we need to, we need more time to analyze those bids once we get the detail.
I think the Sioux City Journal had this morning that I-29 wasn't gonna be done in Sioux City either because of higher-than-expected bids, so I don't know if this is unusual, but we obviously gotta have the bid documents, because I'm sure this is a unit pricing job, and we've gotta look and see what the units are and what the price is and what our engineers' estimates were to see if something was really far off.
The two main work items is, on the one hand, we got a bridge to build, and on the second hand, we have some linear footage of Rec Trail.
Yeah.
It's gonna go from the east side of Floyd to the west side, all the way up to 16th Avenue. So, you know, where, if there is a bust, where is the bust? Is it in the bridge or is it in the trail?
So anybody have a problem with a motion to table until we figure it out?
I make a motion to table consideration of the bids of the Iowa 3 West STP Enhancement Project until city receives bid packets and recommendations from the DOT and DNR, or DGR.
Second.
Any other questions? All of the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Order one passes. Okay, Surface Transportation Program application. Not gonna read all that. So you tell us what it means, Scott, on this 15 through 20 proposals. Are some of those already in place, or some of those yet to be put in place?
Well, a large portion of this agenda item was to show that we have used this program fairly extensively, and if we went back in time into the 1990s, that whole decade, we would show you more completed projects. So we gave it in groupings of five years, from 2005 and from 5 to 10, 10 to 15. Those are projects that are 100% completed. And they used federal funds that, we did the design work, we sent it to the state, the state bid it for us, we got the bids back, we awarded it, and we got the work done. So what is that? That's about 12, 13 projects. The one that we submitted last year with your approval was Central Avenue from Third North to Third South. And we strategically picked that entire area, because that goes through your downtown and a little bit on each end. Third South is the start of the 2005 project that did two blocks of Central Avenue from Third Street South to Fifth Street South. That was all in conjunction with Fourth Street South, that went for nine blocks, and that's on that list. Anyway, I would propose, because in my negotiations and deliberations with the rest of the TAC Committee, there wasn't sufficient federal dollars to go to all the projects, so last year, Lamar's got only partially funded with those federal dollars. We had asked for 80% of the 750,000 that we anticipate this project is gonna cost, and we were given 387, excuse me, 287,000. So we really need to submit that project again for this next year's round in order to bring up, to get to the 80% level. So that's my recommendation to you today, is to get that project first, as fully funded as we can get it, which is 80/20. Beyond that, for your review, would be the 20 to 25 funding years. And again, that seems far out, sitting here in 2013, but 2020 to 2025 is going to be funded as early as next year, a year from today. Because what, where we're allocating the federal funds this round, this winter, is for 2019. So the soonest we can get Central Avenue done is 2019.
And I think the 80% way to look at it is the right way to do it, too. And as Rex noted at the last meeting, there are some other projects that are listed here that we might have to do sooner than later also, so we may want to look at some additional opportunities, maybe with road use tax if it would apply or whatever, to get some of those done. And I start to note that Highway 75 south of Third, Highway 3, is also starting to show some wear in some spots, based on the work that we did, what, three years ago?
Yeah.
So there's gonna be some work required there sooner than later also, so, but I think it's a good idea to do the 80% on that Central Avenue, south to north.
Yeah. The overall theme of the roads I'm picking for suggestion to you are, A, we do need to meet the Federal Aid to Urban System Road classification. That isn't my rule, that's actually FHWA's. So federal funds can only be used on those roads that were, over the years, selected by the federal government going through the DOT as kind of the arterial roads, collector roads, and even on the very bottom tier are local roads, but that are carrying a higher volume of traffic. So those are about the three categories, and there is a map that shows that. I didn't bring it today, but you can go online on the DOT website and see it for yourself, otherwise I could print you off copies. Roads that are on there are the pretty obvious ones. Business 75 that John just mentioned certainly is on there. The two primary systems that DOT has and are responsible for, Highway 3 and Highway 75, they're on there. Central Avenue, 12th Street, Sixth Street North, Fourth Avenue East, all the way through town, Seventh Avenue East for the segment from Highway 3 down to 12th Street. The future segment of that is not on, because it doesn't exist today. Link's Avenue, at least a portion of it from Dairy Queen South, for whatever its reason, from Dairy Queen up to Highway 3 isn't on. I haven't quite figured that out exactly, but I've questioned that to the local systems engineer several times. So Fourth Street South was on the list here, because it was on the federal system.
Fourteenth Avenue?
Fourteenth Avenue is from Highway 3 down to 12th, yeah. So anyway, those are the roads that you would be able to pick from. It's not just limited to the ones I've got listed on this page, is what I'm trying to get at. However, there is just absolutely no way that there's gonna be enough dollars to go around. We're part of a five-county region. It's Region 4, and it includes Plymouth, Cherokee, Woodbury, Ida and Manona. And then any city that has a population of 5,000 or more within those five, and it's only two, Cherokee and Lamar's. The whole MPO, the whole Sioux City area is in Woodbury County, but they're considered an MPO instead of an RPA, so they have their own allotment of dollars and their own board. And we don't rule over them, and they don't rule over us.
Would the Central Avenue project be white-topping?
That's what I proposed, yes. And in fact, the balance of Central Avenue from Fifth to 12th, as well as both segments of 12th Street, I'm proposing white-topping.
Scott, I know on Fourth Avenue Southeast, there were some issues with right-of-way making room to do the white-topping. Is that gonna be an issue at all on Central?
I don't think so.
Okay. Question I have, and I understand these are arterial, you know, the main roads, and they need the emphasis, but I'd kind of like to ask, where do some of our side streets, where do we start looking at some of them? I'll give you two examples, North Lynn and Lee. There's sections of North Lynn and Lee that are, we should turn them into gravel road. I hate to say, but we should, because, but, I mean, and they're not big sections necessarily, but 100, 300 feet-long sections of some of these side streets that are, I feel, need some attention. And I'm 100% for maintaining the main roads, getting all the dollars we can get to help us, but do we have some sort of a structure set up where we're gonna start looking at some of these side streets and cleaning them off? I mean, you know, working on them.
It's called Scott's List.
Yes, yes, and yes.
Road use tax is the number-one way we get money to do that.
The short answer is road use tax.
Yes, we do have a list.
And that is 100% controlled by U5.
Well, the two he mentioned won't, the white top won't work, because I don't think the subsurface is strong enough.
No, the piece of North Lynn that you're talking about, that's a PC overlaying with AC, and the AC up on top is gone bad. That's all. So that's on the list that should be discussed today, but won't be, because I'm not prepared to do so, as a prelude to that item. But that, that piece of AC overlayed street needs to be just peeled off and put back. And then Lee has been on the list and been bumped for several years, but that is still on the list, and that is for the center part to be taken out and put back.
Okay.
And then we have a lot of places around town where we need to do certain, just certain pieces need to be replaced and...
And I think that's why Lee got bumped, is we tried to fix 50 small little pieces instead of one stretch, because we were gonna make 50 people happy versus one, and...
30 people.
That's why it got bumped.
Okay, I mean, I can live with it. Those are the list.
But we're having the discussion, we in fact are having the discussion probably at least five or six times a year in the council chambers. So you'll get party to that easy coming up.
Yeah, yeah.
Like the one year, Clark, we did fifth, well, we bid 52 blocks of AC work. By AC, I mean asphaltic cement work, so overlay. We bid 52, and ended up that year, we did 64. So we got a lot of those accomplished, all in one setting, because we bid it all together, at least we thought we were at 52, and we got a really good price from Barclays.
I think they even did some of the cemetery.
That year, we did some, that's when we kind of started doing the cemetery.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
I make a motion approving application to the Surface Transportation Program for the 2015, 2020 street projects as recommended by staff, city staff.
Second.
Any other questions? Motion, you can move in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Amending Chapter 29 Historic Preservation Commission. We adopted the first reading of this ordinance on the 21st of January to amend the commission ordinance, really, to more correctly align with the state guidelines and what we're actually doing. Does anybody got questions with that?
Motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 918, amending Chapter 29 Historic Preservation Commission as amended.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
It's a real call.
Oops.
Dang.
Yes.
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 Motion to waive the third reading and adopt ordinance number 918, amending Chapter 29 Historic Preservation Commission on the second reading.
Second.
All those, well, it's a real call, so we don't get in trouble.
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rex Lingo?
Yes.
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 Motion passed. We've got a new ordinance. Okay, West Floyd Little League Complex. Attached is a letter from Heath, which is here, President of Little League Board of Directors, regarding the West Floyd Complex to change the name to John Britton Little League Complex. I imagine there'll be no discussion on this, but somebody want to make a motion?
Motion approving Little League's request to rename the West Floyd Little League Complex to the John Britton Little League Complex.
Second.
You want to say anything, Heath, or?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, I just, I forgot, I should've let you talk at least, since you came down.
No, I just want to say thank you for taking this into consideration and bolting on it. We, as Little League Board, have discussed a number of ways to remember John, and our feeling is, from all the work that's gone out there, he has kind of led the charge on it, so we appreciate your time taking this into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of renaming the Little League Complex, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right along, city attorney contract. Our revisions have been made and negotiated with Joe Flannery to perform legal services. Attached is a revised contract for review. We're looking at a three-year contract with Joe. Has anybody got questions about the contract? Realizing that Joe's probably the one that drafted the contract.
I read it out, to make sure he didn't slip something in there.
I make a motion approving the three-year contract with Joseph W. Flannery, PC, to perform legal services.
Second to the motion.
Got a motion in second. Any other questions for Joe or about the contract? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Improvement Program?
Oh, that's the one I'm not ready to present on that text.
So we're just gonna skip it. We're not even gonna table for now, we'll skip it. Then we're gonna go to Water System Improvements. My question is, do we really want a well called number 13?
That's what I was wondering, too.
Water System Improvement is water mains. And no, I don't, that's another project for another day, but I think we need to skip number 13.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to make sure I was on the record here.
Anyway, as we added it to make sure we got our bases covered, we're handling this project a little differently than a normal capital project, in the sense that your water staff, very similar to the way we handled the water main going out to the north interchange in order to accommodate the Feder Marine Building. We had the design done, and we obtained quotes for the installation only, and your water staff purchased the materials directly. So it was a direct city purchase of material, and then we contracted with a contractor to install those city furnished materials. We'd like to do this project the same way. This project was anticipated, like I put in the agenda, it was anticipated at the time that the water tower was sited and the booster station was designed. time that the water tower was sited and the booster station was designed. We need water from the south water plant that we have at Eighteenth and Industrial. We need that water to get to the water tower and the booster station, and then we need a distribution system from that, that new location to the high elevation zone in Lamar's. Just real briefly, we've got the low elevation zone and a high elevation zone. In the high elevation zone, the only way those people get adequate pressure is by going through a booster pump, and thus the booster station. So we sited the water tower where we did, along with the booster station, so that we can boost that pressure to that higher elevation zone, also referred to as the low pressure zone, in order to boost that pressure so that irrigate, when Rex lived there, we had issues with the irrigation system not working quite right.
And our fire protection.
And then it involves fire protection and, and pressure within second story of two-story homes, that makes sure the toilets flush and so forth. So we try to maintain somewhere in sixty PSI, pounds per square inch range, and if it wasn't for the booster station, some of those pressures can dip down to twenties and thirties PSI. It's not enough to really allow sprinkler systems to pop the sprinkler head, and in some cases, in the worst-case scenarios, it isn't enough pressure to really get adequate pressure to a second-story shower, for example. So this water distribution, as you see on that map that you have before you, the piece from Eighteenth Street South to Twenty-Fourth on Sixth Avenue, which is a twelve-inch, and the piece from Industrial Road to Six on Two Hundred Street, which is also Twenty-Fourth, is also a twelve-inch. We would extend twelve-inch from two different directions to get to that intersection where the water tower is going to be, so it fills the water tower from your south plant. The sixteen-inch along Two Hundred Street for a short half-mile, that's from Sixth Avenue West to what will be a future location of Central Avenue, that'll be sixteen-inch because the two twelves get combined and go up into the tower, the booster station takes it from the tower, shoves it down the sixteen-inch to the east, so that it gets connected to that high elevation zone. And then the balance from Central Avenue to where Marty Pippet's addition is, that'll be twelve-inch. That'll make the actual most current connection. In the future, we will have to get the right-of-way and put it going down Central Avenue and make that connection as well, but that's not part of this project. So, I think I put in the agenda for you, about seventy-one hundred and fifty feet a twelve-inch, twenty-four hundred and ten feet a sixteen-inch, and then there's a variety of fittings, twenty-two of them, and there's twelve different work items. This would be built, bid as a unit price bid, so that we can adjust quantities as needed out in the field.
Motion establishing February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, at twelve PM, a public hearing on planned specification forms of contract estimates of cost for the water system improvement, two thousand twelve, water main extension.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Continuing down the list, discussion items. We'll start council, we'll start with Kenny.
Okay, Dave, thank you.
Lana?
Nothing.
Clark?
Yes. I know that CB, Community Betterment Project list is out for number two. I don't know if that committee's completely formed yet. I just want to just get this on the radar. Lamar's Municipal Park Pond is high on my list of priority items, and I just want to just kind of give you a little bit of an update. No, no other issue, since I got into this whole election and getting on, on this council, the comments I've gotten from the public, fifty percent of them are about this park pond and the improvements out there, so it's pretty high on my list. I've been contacted by a couple of groups that have said they would be willing to look into participating, possibly participating financially, in, in, in helping this project move forward. I have personally met with a couple of contractors on a total unofficial basis to visit possibilities and, and ideas for that, and I guess I just want to plant an idea that one of them came up with that I think is a phenomenal idea, and it basically involves not dredging. It involves pumping them dry and using earth equipment to actually clean them and, and make one pond and make an additional camping area, which would basically close in the south pond, but you pump them dry and you use land equipment. There's even the possibility out there, that one of the contractors said to me, he said there's a good possibility that you could even sell aggregate. You could get companies that would actually want gravel, if you found decent gravel in there, so it could actually even help pay. It could help to move, you know, haul it away. Maybe the county possibly outfits would buy it or just haul it away. So, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities out there, and I just wanted to, as this Community Betterment Project number two gets organized, just let them know that that's really high on my radar. I know it's on their list, so I'd like to see us get moving forward on that, so.
Anything else?
Just as a reminder, that committee is formed, and there's nine members plus five ex-official. It has met on January sixteenth, and it intends to meet every third Thursday of the month for the foreseeable future.
Okay, John? Anything? Okay, Bill? Got anything?
Just the budget, if we're ready to talk about that.
I'll skip with that right now. Deb, you got anything? How about Scott?
We did have the pre-construction meeting on the water tower and the booster station on January ninth. No activity has taken place physically, but a lot of paperwork. Submittals of shop drawings have been done, all the startup paperwork has been done, and we think by the next meeting in February, that too will be the third Thursday at one o'clock, we'll have a progress meeting on that, and so we think things will start getting put together on both of those projects. You have two separate contracts, as you know. Rice Lake is doing the booster station, and Caldwell Tank is doing the tower. So we'll be meeting with both of those contractors as time goes on. We got also two contractors on the wastewater treatment plant, and we have done a progress meeting last Thursday on that. That's the last Thursday of each month that we intend to do that. Both have schedules, Vanderpole for the force main and the, all the lift stations, as well as the work at the current treatment plant and the work at the new treatment plant by Rice Lake. They have a critical path schedule in both cases that they can get it done by April one. However, if anything that is ancillary to their schedule isn't achieved, it will push the April one date back. And we collectively, meaning Bolton and Mink, as well as your wastewater staff, as well as administration, have been pushing them to get the project done by April one. So I'm sharing with you that there is, there is a means and method that is only controlled by the contractor. That is not the city's obligation, it's not your engineer's obligation, it's the contractors to get it done by that date and to figure out how to get it done. However, the ancillary forces that come into play here is equipment deliveries, most of which has already been accomplished, but there are a few remaining components. For example, some motor control centers have been ordered long ago for shipment in a timely fashion such that the project can get done, but they're still not here, and there's still promises being made that they're going to be delivered in February. It needs to be delivered in February in order to get that project done by April one. April one is critical, if you recall, if we kind of turned the clock back almost a full twelve months when we were negotiating the agreements with both Dean Foods and Wells Dairy, Wells Enterprises. It is, it was vital then, twelve months ago, and it's still vital today, that the new treatment plant, and therefore that new capacity, come online on or around April one because of the increased production at those facilities. So that's what we're up against. Staff is on top of it with our engineers. On the other hand, it's those outside forces that may or may not come through. We don't know yet, but I'm just kind of telling you what we've heard, most recently last Thursday in the progress meeting, that the MCCs, the motor control centers, have to get here by mid this month in order to achieve that schedule.
Do you have a contact with the two industries that you fill in periodically, just like a status update or anything?
They are, they come to all of our monthly meetings.
So, so they're fully aware of what's going on then?
They are.
Do we have a backup plan?
That is, that's a good question, thank you, Clark. That was discussed last Thursday, and more particularly, that Rice Lake wanted to know really what design criteria is before them on April one, and can that be partially met by a partial startup? And that's still being investigated. The thing about a wastewater treatment plant, either all the components, all the respective components, as, as it goes down the chain of treatment, they need to work in some capacity in order to treat the wastewater so that the end flow is able to go to the river.
Is acceptable.
Yeah. Now, to get from point A through all the points to get to Z in a wastewater treatment plant, that doesn't mean everything has to be working at peak efficiency in order to achieve the outcome, but what's indicative here then is what comes in the front door can't be the full slug in order to get out the back door treated.
Acceptable, right.
Treated. So, to state that a little differently, if, if twenty percent of the anticipated strength is coming in the front door, we can maybe treat, because it's only twenty percent, but if it's a hundred percent coming in the front door, we need a hundred percent of the plant, otherwise it can't treat it. So we're investigating those kinds of options, just to let you know. Now, what's vital to some of that is, the boring underneath the expressway is not done yet. And I think we've had, I have given you some updates in the past that they were having difficulty with that bore, and lo and behold, they need to scrap the bore in place as it exists today, and do it over. And this is not a small thing. It's, it's not a two-inch fiber line or a two-inch gas line. This is a forty-eight-inch casing. It's large, and the first try did not work. And so that is one of those critical links in this whole process that must get done before we can utilize the new plant. DOT has been gracious and granted a second permit to do the second try. That was issued yesterday. It was applied for a week ago yesterday, and so they, that's a milestone in and of itself. I want to publicly thank the District Three Office of DOT for doing that in a real timely fashion. So we, we do have the permit, the landowners have okayed it, the contractor's aware of all this, and they're going to start immediately on a new try. It's critical because what goes in that forty-eight-inch casing is two fourteen-inch pipes and one two-inch pipe, but the casing keeps the earth out so that the other pipes can go through, and it's four hundred feet long, so it's not a small task.
Scott, with, with the depth of frost this year, is quality backfilling going to be an issue or not?
That affects the force main that's down along the Floyd River more so, because the force main from the old plant to the new plant, that was done last fall. And then some of it from the high, Business Highway Seventy-Five by McDonald's there, all the way up to the existing plant, some of that was done during more favorable weather. What John is alluding to is, they are still working at that, and as of last Thursday, twelve-hundred feet needed to be put in yet. I think that's, to give you a barometer on the twelve-hundred, they had like sixty-eight-hundred feet total to put in, so they're down to twelve-hundred, and they thought that within a week to ten days that would be accomplished. That being said, what won't be accomplished is a hundred percent backfill because of John's question. We can't put frozen material that they dug off the top and put it back in that trench. So those, the frozen materials being thrown off to the side, the material that isn't frozen is going in first as backfill, and then that upper piece of the trench will be backfilled this spring when things thaw out.
And then the same would be with the lift station at Dean's, getting that all.
That is correct. At least, I think there's nine structures within that one hole. And of the nine structures, the bases of all nine are in, and most of the nines are protruding out through the top now. And so really, that, it seems like it's been a long time, and it has, but I mean, they're at least coming to the conclusion of that lift station. So things are well on their way there, and they should be accomplished now. So it's a very complex, well, it's, it's going to be at twenty-one million, so we're spending a lot of dollars making that happen, so. I just want you to leave this meeting knowing that we do have, we really do believe that the April one can be achieved, but the materials have to arrive in a timely enough fashion that the contractor and their subs can install it, test it, and start it up before that timeframe.
We know where the contractors are going to be digging, in case we got to get ahead of them with our little flags and stuff like that, so we don't have any more issues?
Yes, we've got, it's, it's in a six-page critical path schedule. It's all listed exactly what they're, what they're going to be working on each day for the next sixty days to get it accomplished.
Just so that both departments are out there kind of ahead of their game just a little bit, because those things tend to get moved and displaced and stuff.
That's true. Something else that might be near and dear to just a citizen's mind, and that is the piece that went from, when you got back behind Walmart up to the existing treatment plant, that couples as an eighteen-hole, at least a portion of it, eighteen-hole Frisbee Golf, and it also couples as a rec trail, some of which, in both cases, have been damaged. You might say that couldn't be helped just because of the large equipment and whatnot in the close proximity. The contractor's fully aware of that. We have requested that at the crack of spring, when things are thought out at the appropriate time, that those components of the city's recreational facilities get repaired immediately. We're not going to wait until July, it's, it's going to be fixed in March or early April. So I would ask the citizens to be patient, at least up until that point. We can't, we can't tear up the concrete that's been broken on the rec trail. We can't, we can't tear up the concrete that's been broken on the rec trail and repair it when it's, the subgrades are frozen. And the same thing with some of those baskets, they need to be poured in concrete, so we're going to have to wait until the conditions are favorable.
Has the trail itself been marked for safety purposes as far as cones or anything? I, I don't bike this time of year, so I wouldn't know.
I have not been out, that's a good question, I'll find out.
I mean, because there are some people who do, go figure. But I know there are people out there, and so, you know, maybe even if some of our cyclist group or somebody that's out on that could let us know if there's anything that for safety purposes needs to be coned or marked or something, which will probably last till the next big wind, but at least it's a start.
We'll get that checked out. I have not been out there.
And Shane already left, so can't ask him.
That's all I have.
Do we want to discuss this EPA thing?
Oh, yes.
This EPA letter that says the PCE contamination is not from our EPA investigation, but there's other things in our air that we're still looking at. Explain that better than I did.
The EPA did call a public hearing there in, I believe it was December, to discuss with the public at, in general, what they're investigating on the PCE-contaminated site, which starts on this block and runs northwest for about four blocks. It's very real, and there are contamination numbers that exceed the EPA action levels. And PCEs, it is, for residential is 42. These are in units of micrograms per cubic meter, 42 in residential, and 180 for business. And we have one location that's 170,000, many locations that are in the 1,000 range. So it's very real. We were given on the 29th of January, a letter directed at, to the City of Lamars itself regarding the building we're sitting in, and that includes the building we own that's attached and adjacent to the asylum, we rented to the asylum, that this letter is simply giving the City of Lamars on a city-owned facility, this one, that the contaminants, although detected in some cases, are below the action levels. And that's especially true for PCE and TCE. I guess I didn't give the, TCE is, has a action level for residential of 2 and a business action level of 8.8. So in both of those contaminant parameters, this building is, got a, a clean bill. Now, what you have before you, and I thought it would be applicable to give you each a copy because how do you explain two and a, two and apart pages of tests that were analyzed for all these different compounds? So you have the figures, any place where it says less than, that's the analytical equivalency to a no detect. If it says less than some number, it's in effect not been tested, or not detected. If it has a straight-up number, then it was detected, and that's the number for that particular compound. What you don't have, so I met with Susan Fisher this morning on this document, what you don't have is the action levels for some of the other compounds that were tested, for example, acetone, or benzene, or taline, taline lean. So on those, that goes back to the general listing that EPA can put out, and you can go online yourself to see those. I didn't print it off as of this morning. She assured me that all those are well below any action levels. And action level is another terminology, some of you might be in that business, and it's MCL, the maximum contaminant level. It's, it's well below those. So all in all, this is a good report. This building and our building that we own adjacent were clean.
And for the public information, which I, they probably obviously already know, is this is a follow-up to the EPA's public meeting they had here, what, about a month ago?
I believe it was in December.
Okay, December.
And we had a-
We had a discussed with anyone that wanted to know what was happening as far as the PCE was concerned.
Yes. EPA was here well represented. I believe there was eight or nine-
Right.
EPA people, mostly out of the Kansas City office, in this room. And we, it was well attended by our property owners up and down in this area. And so the contamination is real when it comes to where that source is at and how it's migrating to the northwest. We will be submitting to them maps of our sanitary sewer system, our storm sewer system, and our water mains. And they may very well go to the semi-public utilities, gas, electric, telephone, cable, et cetera, et cetera, in order to see where their cables are run underground. Their worry there is that humans can't put the soil back like Mother Nature had originally put it there. And so any disturbance of the underground creates a pathway. And so water, the path of least resistance for any contamination would follow what man has put in the ground. So if it's a long pipe line of some sort, whether again, if it's gas, or a conduit, or sewers, or water mains, those contaminants would be more freely flowing through the ground in those channels than what Mother Nature put there. So they really want to get to know that. Analytically, I believe they have identified a source. They're not sharing it because it's in legal hands.
Does each of the property owners in this plume, will they get a letter similar to what we got for this building?
As I understand, that's a good question, Ken. As I understand it, each property owner that had, each property that was tested will get a similar letter depending on what the results are.
If they chose to do the test?
If they allowed entry so that the test could be done. That's tr, very true.
Right.
Some have denied.
The EPA's pretty much identified the area.
They have.
That they believe the contaminate, contaminant has affected.
Yeah. It's a little bit of a hook on it, but it basically goes northwest from the corner of this block, northwest, and terminates about halfway between the post office block and Clark School block. I only point them businesses out as, as a means to graphically show you where it goes to.
That's kind of the same migration that we had with the other pollution, seems to go toward the northwest when we were doing our city building over there.
But this has nothing to do, this is totally-
Yeah, I realize that, but I mean, the migration is kind of similar pattern from our wells and the center, it's always seemed to have gone that direction.
That direction, or that pattern is, that's a well-founded statement. That pattern makes sense for a couple of reasons. Our wastewater treatment plant is located in the northwest quadrant of the city, and all pipes lead to that. They, all those pipes have a slope downhill to that point. Our drainage for storm sewer purposes also drain to the northwest. Some of it a little more west than northwest, but still, it's northwest. And so once again, if contaminants were to follow some pipes, they're going to continue to go down downhill, and so that downhill is in the direction of northwest. It's consistent with what's been identified as the plume of contamination. The good news is, they're still going to do what they stated during the public meeting, is two businesses will get an air evacuation system, not unlike a radon system. And they did have a glitch in their bidding process, EPA did, and so they had to rebid, she told me this morning, otherwise it would have already been installed. But they re, are rebidding for those, at least those two, and maybe more, of businesses that may need those.
But I believe she said at the meeting in December, that two businesses, two businesses had already put the system in on their own with funding from EPA.
Yep. Then, one other thing regarding that is, you may be requested and to approve access by the EPA on public land that you control, city land, in order to go after the source. And more on that, I can't really intelligently talk today on it, other than she wanted to know if the city would be in a position to allow that. You would have to be asked that question, not me, yet I told her that my recommendation would, to you, would be to go ahead with it.
Yeah, why would we not want to do it?
Yes, it would take care of a problem. So they are investigating a couple of different solutions to trying to take care of the source. And I'll, again, I'll come back to you with more information on that as it is available to me.
I was at that EPA meeting, and what I understood was, when this report came out, it went to each individual, if their business was found to be unacceptable, that the EPA was going to pay for mitigation systems in the, for, for the access they were allowed. So if a building was found to be higher than acceptable tolerances, EPA was giving these systems away. That's how I understood it that night.
They're going to pick up the cost, yes. And I, I don't know exactly how, what mechanism they were going to do to do that, but I think it gave the property owners some comfort on how to proceed or not to proceed.
Yeah, both of you are correct. The EPA would pick up the initial costs, but then the ongoing costs would have to be agreed to by the property owner.
Yeah, the electricity and whatnot to run it.
Well, repairs and maintenance in the future, as well as operational costs.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Now we go to the budget. We started our meeting last week with $181,000 shortfall. It is now down to an $81,000 shortfall. And Bill also gave you, besides about 20 new pages, he gave you the fiscal year 14 budget, so you can see how we did that in the prior year, and that we actually had a surplus in that year. So I don't know if that's still in place or not, so give us the update.
Okay. As Rock said, we started at the $181,000 shortfall. In front of you have a list of, of what cuts were made during the workshop to get us down to the 80,000. I'd be glad to answer any questions on those if you like. I won't read them all to you, but the bulk of them, the biggest item was moving two police cars from the operational budget to funding them with the general fund cash balance, if there was funds available. You asked me to go back and, and look at the year-to-date numbers, plus add the projected numbers for the remaining year. I did that for all general fund departments for the remaining five months, and used actual for the first seven months. As you sat here last year, you, the way you did your budget, you allowed for $75,000 worth of general fund unallocated balance to, to stay there. As a result of my test of the current and, and projected, as we said today, it'd be about $5,000 more than that. So there'd be about $80,000 there, which would more than pay for the $57,000 for the two police cars. So we could fund that out of existing cash balances without, without affecting any of the operating budgets. Also, as Graham told you earlier, we had 115, 113 days worth of coverage. At a previous council meeting, you did decide to take $200,000 from that cash balance to fund the first payment on the fire truck. If, in effect, what that'll do is I'll take your 113 days down to 102 days, just so you know what, what the impact of that was. Now, we also said we were going to take the next $200,000 that was due out of that same fund balance if we didn't have another source by the time that payment comes due, which is a year from now. If that were to happen, then we'd go down in the 90, about 90, 92 range as far as a fund balance. So again, that's still within the guidelines Graham had indicated, but maybe by the time a year from now comes, we will have a different funding source. At, at that time, we can look at. But that's, that's kind of a worst-case scenario as far as what your fund balance is. As far as FY14, the year we're in now, I see that as coming in pretty close to what was projected. So I guess that gets us to the point where we need to decide as a, as a group, what we're willing to accept. We're at a minus 80,000, almost a minus 81,000 at this point. The options are, we, we could leave it like that, it could be, it does not by law have to be a balanced budget at the general fund level. It would just mean we'd be using additional cash balance to fund that. There's always the option of increasing transfers. We have a TIF transfer we're making currently, we have a road use transfer we're making. So that is an option to increase those transfers into the general fund. The third option, which we don't like to discuss, would be to raise taxes, which I don't think anyone is in favor of that at this point. A fourth option is to find alternate funding for something we've already budgeted for in the general fund for FY15. Just an example of that, we budgeted the street sweeper, the new street sweeper, which we think will cost about 210,000. At, at the last meeting, we said we'd do a third of that from road use, a third from solid waste, and a third from general fund. Now, if we opt to not do the third from the general fund, the street department, and for instance, take two-thirds from solid waste, because the street sweeper is very much related to the landfill, the leaf and grass site, so that would free up 70,000 of the general fund. So that, that's another option that's possible, or part of it from road use. So we do have some options as far as how we can fund the 80,000. I've been through all the department budgets. I don't see, I don't see any fluff in any of those budgets. Again, we've been back to the department heads a couple of times. We will do whatever, whatever council asks. So I guess I'd kind of open it up for suggestions, or ideas, or questions.
And if, if we do a TIF transfer, additional TIF transfer, it'd still be substantially less than we've done in, not last year, but the years before.
At one time, we were transferring about 400,000 from TIF, and, and we reduced that. We like to keep that as, as low as possible. Again, we have to have the justification, so we have to make sure that we're defiiting whatever amount of TIF we transfer.
The quite, one question that I have is the $7,500 in the airport. Should that really be, should, should our bottom line number be maybe 88,000? I, the only reason I'm asking this question is because I called Earl and I said, Earl, what, what are the chances of matching funds? And, and he said, you know, it's hard to say, but he'd like to think 70% positive, 30% negative. Well, if, if he's right, then really that 7,500 would have to come back down to the data, right?
If it wasn't funded, if it wasn't matched by-
Well, if it is matched, we're not going to do it, right?
If it's not matched, we're going to do it. If it's matched, our share, it's a $15,000 project.
Okay, so either way, we'd be adding 7,500.
No, but we left 7,500.
We left 75 in.
But if it's not matched, we got to come up with a full.
If it's not matched, with my understanding, we probably wouldn't go forward with the project.
That's what, okay, I just, okay, I, that's what I thought I said. Okay, I apologize. Okay. But, so I, I was questioning that, if, if that number should be, okay, I, I got you now. So I got you on that.
So we left a match in the budget.
Yeah, we left a match in.
Okay, I got it.
If it doesn't materialize.
If it doesn't materialize, we actually 7,500 more.
And at the risk of publicly asking a really stupid question.
Not at this point.
The street sweeper.
Yes.
Is there a, a storm sewer fund? And if so, is, is some of that street sweeper, sweeper onto that fund? Because actually, that's what that thing is protecting, right?
Yeah, the storm sewer fund is not very well off.
Right. We need those dollars to-
We did several storm sewer projects in the past.
Okay.
That were trying to get that fund tilt back up so where it has some funding in it.
Right.
So, yeah, that would not have a source.
No, at this point, those are not stupid questions, because you're right. That's where it comes from, no different than solid waste, no different than even road use. But the reality is, the solid waste is a very strong fund, the sewer fund is a very poor fund.
And solid waste is a good legitimate tie to-
And we haven't used it ever to buy a street sweeper from solid waste. So, now that we're finally building up a balance, it's probably the most genuine use we have for those extra dollars. And people saying, "Well, yeah, but why is the solid waste fund going?" Well, it's going unless you're paying $10 a month for garbage, which other people are paying $20 a month for garbage all over the country. So, we're not charging you too much, we're just doing a tremendous job with recycling, a tremendous job with recycling, a tremendous job with handling our waste, and therefore we've been just very successful. So, we're just trying to use some of those successful dollars to do another, basically, community project, which is to get a very expensive street sweeper, which seems absolutely absurd when you look at a quarter of a million dollars for a street sweeper, but that's what it is, and we're trying to get it done so that it'll actually work. But, you know-
Technically, Clark, you're right. There's no money there, so we're taking it from general, but it really belongs in storm. But if we take it from storm, we'd have to make a transfer from general fund to storm.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
So, you asked a good question. I mean, legitimately, not, you know-
Actually, he's technically right, because we took, we reduced the garbage by $2 to get the stormwater fund going to build it up to where it is now.
Right.
So, we're still the same-
To avoid an offset to people's costs, monthly costs.
Yeah, but it was the same dollars.
Yes.
So, you know, we've got, we've basically got a four-day shortfall. So, we had a four-day, we're still thinking we're going to be four days long for 14 versus four days short for 15?
Yes.
So, does that make sense, that they just go together and we don't have actually a deficit? Or do we have to actually play with some of the things you're talking about?
I like the idea of playing with the street sweeper.
Okay.
Take that out of general fund, I don't care-
If we do that, then we're looking at 10,000.
Yeah. And whichever way it needs to go, if it's 50% road use, 50 waste water, or, you know, the one-third and two-thirds. And I'm looking, if I'm reading this right, on solid waste fund balance, 337?
I think that's page 82.
Yeah, it is 82. You have that memorized?
Pretty scary, isn't it?
That was impressive.
I'm more impressed now, I didn't say that, that's for sure.
Yeah, what that shows is, we had a, I think we had a question about that.
He thought we were going there.
Look how small the numbers are.
We ended FY13 at 343,000, and if, as we got it plugged with two-thirds of the, with one-third of the street sweeper and half of the dump truck, we would be short 94,000 for FY15. So, even if you take 94,000 off, we still got, even with the 70, that would get it to 163, still looking at $180,000 fund balance.
Right, because that 93, obviously, 94 subsidy that's showing, that doesn't take into account that 337 balance.
Correct.
So, you could subtract, yeah.
And then you still subtract under 70, but we're still 150 ahead after all that stuff.
Yes.
And that's still a pretty healthy balance. And that balance, I think, was maintained this year, right?
Yes, right now, it's at a break-even status, the solid waste fund is. It's state level for the last couple of years.
Well, this isn't something we're going to need to purchase every year, so I think, you know, especially since we're already fitting the first portion, or that portion of the fire truck into our, well, our reserve, essentially.
Our 11 days, yeah.
Yeah, I really would prefer to just move that street sweeper to an enterprise fund.
Anybody got a problem with that?
No. It sounds like a plan, and just leave the reserve days alone?
Well, we might take one more, a portion of a reserve day then, and get that other 10,000.
That's what I was going to say, you get 10,000 left. I think he said, I think he said it was 18,000 a day, so, you know, that's, if we're within a day, we're pretty doggone good on 6 million dollars.
Can we furlough for half a day?
We can't furlough for half a day. No, don't go there, don't go there.
Okay.
No. Anything else that people, when they relook at the 100 pages and stuff that they got for questions?
I want to see which ones he has memorized.
I do want to say that we do have a budget book at the library, we do have one here in City Hall at the front counter. Should any citizens want to come in and look at a copy of any pages, absolutely welcome to do that. And if you have any questions, anybody can call me directly, too.
So, what's the library page?
What's the library page?
Yeah.
38.
No. Okay. Anything else from anybody in the audience? Okay, I think that's what we want to do on the budget. I think we've got to set a hearing at the next meeting?
Yes, at the next meeting, you'll have to adopt a budget and set the hearing date for the following meeting.
Sounds like what we got is a, numbers that we're pretty comfortable with as a-
Very workable.
Yep.
Right.
And we'll do the hearing, set the hearing, and then the first meeting in March, we actually approve it.
And just to reiterate, that is done without changing the city tax rate.
Yes, that's leading to tax laws here.
I'm sure we're very clear on that. Any increase you see is not coming from the city.
It will be because of the rollback, anything on the city side.
Or increased assessments.
Right. It's either an assessment increase, it's a rollback change for residential and for commercial, so it can either be a good news or a bad news deal. And on the commercial, I think they said, what do we have, like 90% of the people actually signed the deal to get the 5% reduction, but 10% for some reason didn't sign the deal. But that's similar to homestead. If you don't sign the deal for homestead, you're not going to get it. So, that's the way they did it on the commercial, so. But, again, I'll be, I'll be mean, you've got to read Bennett's article in the paper so you can see if it makes any sense or not, because it's going to have 4,000 numbers in it, and I want him to recite them at the next meeting, so.
If it's confusing, it's your fault.
It is confusing because it is confusing. We'll go into closed session, and thanks again. End of our regular meeting.
Sorry, because I don't have it memorized. Motion to enter closed session under Iowa Code 21.2.